This meeting is now being called to order at six forty-five. City of East Cleveland Agenda Review, Thursday, January fourteenth. This is the regular council meeting, Tuesday, January nineteenth. This is Cleveland City Hall. Called to order.
Council, first, uh, council president, a reminder to add to tonight's agenda of the...
You're welcome, first.
You're welcome, first. Council, Council Martin?
President.
Council Thomas, okay. Council Graham?
President.
Council King?
President.
Council Wheeler?
President. Before we go any further, we need to make a motion to, uh, have Patricia Parker take the minutes for tonight's meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that Patricia Parker, the Council A, be allowed to take the minutes for our council meeting tonight.
On board, she can't do that. She's just saying, do what you want to do, but let me tell you what, how it's supposed to be done. She has to be a clerk or deputy clerk, certified, sworn in. She works for the Black Age Caucus. Do what you want to do, I'm not gonna argue, I'm just telling you what, how it's supposed to be done.
We gotta have somebody take the minutes.
Well, you take the minutes. You take the minutes. Neither her or Miss Guy can take the minutes.
Yep.
Okay?
Can I get some advice on that, on that longer? Okay. The motion, the motion out there?
No, no, no motion, I just said...
Right, no, I was saying, King made a motion. Nobody seconded motion.
Oh, alright.
Well, actually...
Just, if I got a motion, if somebody seconded motion, it's for discussion, is the way it should work. So, can't get seconded in motion.
I second it for discussion.
Okay, so for discussion. Would you go ahead and mark it? How long time?
I'm saying that that is what, uh, Council Martin said is correct. Uh, first of all, um, you should have gotten the information from the Law Director, yes, which way you were wanting to go in first. I know where to vote for all of it.
Well, we voted because we, we just found out last week, as Councilman Martin brought our attention, that all our meetings, we had never authorized, had to do anything. She's been taking the minutes for, for the whole year. So, instead, it's time we go to vote on it, so we can never just take the minutes at the beginning of the meeting until we actually swear in our actual clerk. But it's only temporary, so...
I had to record, Council President.
Okay.
So, now I'm taking the minutes. Well, we just need somebody to take the minutes, we're not passing any legislation. So, if, if I say I'm taking the minutes, then, then why would it matter?
Uh, Mr. King and Miss President, you're dealing with a ten million dollar corporation, and you have to do it the right way. That's all, that's, that's all I need to say. You can do it the way you want it, you have to do it the right way.
The motion's been seconded to have Ms. Parker take the minutes. So, now, I mean, if there's any unreadiness, we'll...
Call, call for the vote.
I have a, I have a question, as far as, so, anything that takes place at this point is not valid? Is that Law Director, nothing will be valid? Unless the vote goes through, then it will be valid, as far as Ms. Parker taking the minutes?
Well, if she takes the minutes, then it'll be... I mean, if you vote, yeah, if you vote for her to take the minutes. So, you call for the question, unless there's other discussion.
So, would this be almost comparable to when, let's say, the clerk was not available in past times, and the council meeting still went on?
Yes.
Without the clerk?
Since October.
So, there's really no difference than what has already taken place prior?
Yes.
It says I were acknowledging that we're allowing someone to take the minutes that's not the council clerk, before we did acknowledge it.
Before, it was acknowledged that the, uh, there was the clerk wasn't sworn in. It was acknowledged, and it was acknowledged up here, and it was acknowledged before Council Martin brought it to your attention, that needed to have the clerk, and need to have a clerk. But, you know, I don't, I don't wanna debate, and I don't wanna hold up the meeting no later, neither, I'm not voting for it. You got three votes, so...
My, my, my question, Law Director, so, in the past, when we haven't had a clerk or when there hasn't been a clerk present, prior to, let's say, just in two thousand fifteen, when a clerk wasn't present, and Patricia Parker took the minutes before?
Yes, that's the same, that's the same difference.
No, it's, it's not the same difference. If you're acknowledging that neither one of the, of the individuals is not sworn in, then you're sitting up here on record saying that neither one of these individuals have legally been sworn in. So, to take the minute, so whatever you all want to do, it's not fine with me, but you got three votes, the, the Law Director's...
I have a vote.
Well, I'm saying, she said, you, you got three votes, so if you get the three votes or whatever, then you can go ahead and, and it's valid.
Go ahead.
Or, yes, that's, that was my suggestion, that was my suggestion.
That's what you gotta do.
What, what was your suggestion?
Well, if she gets sworn in, it's just that won't be part of the minutes, it's just she got sworn in outside of the, you know, she could get sworn in anytime.
But I agree since the meeting, and swear her in, and then reconvene.
She's never been sworn in.
Yeah, she could be sworn in right now.
Right now, you're sworn in.
Well, we had a couple of months of meetings, and she wasn't sworn in, so how are we operating?
Although, you're not gonna go back. If somebody wants to resent all those...
No, no, we don't, but I was just... Okay, so, so...
So, why was it okay then versus not?
It wasn't okay then.
Okay, we just didn't catch it then.
No, we, we just didn't make it...
So, you knew it, but you didn't make it...
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's do the swearing.
We, we figured out, who swears her in?
Who are you swearing in?
The Council President can swear in.
Yeah, I'm gonna swear in.
To take the minutes?
Yeah.
No, to, as council clerk.
Yeah.
You swear in as a council clerk?
Yeah, then we go in there, take the minutes.
Yeah, you can deconvene.
Let me ask you a question, can I ask a question? If you're gonna swear the, the, the new young lady in, why are you sw- swearing in Pat?
No, I wasn't swearing Pat in.
Oh, what are you talking about?
We just given her authority to take, to take the minutes of the meeting, till we got to that point. We got that right in the agenda.
Well, we can change the, uh, the, the thing of the agenda, right?
It, it, it's, it's, it's fine, wherever you all wanna do it. I just know that you wanna do it right, and for the last, last six months, it was different, so...
Mister President, I'm suggesting doing it right. All you wanna do is take the thing to change the order of the agenda, and put that in right there as a swearing in, and then the young lady, this guy, can do, can take the minutes, and at a later date, tomorrow, she can do her, uh, transcribe. Simple. We don't need to make that issue out of that. We have a motion on the floor, and nobody, who's in the middle of discussion, so they can take the motion back and rescind the motion, and just have a motion to redo the agenda, which includes that.
Fine, Council President, I'd like to rescind the motion.
He had to rescind it, he made the motion.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the mo- okay, very good.
I'd like to rescind the motion to have Pat take the minutes for this meeting.
Not that.
No, 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 no.
Ms. Parker, is that what you're doing?
No, he's rescinding his...
Oh, oh, okay, I'll take it.
And then, and then Councilwoman Graham has to rescind her second.
Alright.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we move new business, the swearing in of the council clerk, to now, so that we'll have someone to take the minutes.
Second, any discussion? No discussion, all is rolling.
Uh, Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Yes.
Council Graham?
Yes.
Council King?
Yeah.
Council Wheeler?
Yeah.
Okay, you can go on with this, motion canceled.
Swear, yeah, swear in.
Now, now you gotta, now you wanna move on the agenda, put it up on the agenda?
Yeah, just move it up.
We moved to change the...
Yeah, you moved it up.
You got a Bible?
I have a Bible.
Sorry. You have a Bible? You want a Bible?
Is anyone in the clerk's office?
See, see, see.
There's one in...
Where do you do with somebody that...
Move and run and get a Bible.
You can pull up a Bible.
On your, on your, on your... It's okay.
How do you, people face bearing? It doesn't have to have, we're the required by...
Well, come on, let's proceed, come on, huh?
Man, Law Director, you have to have a Bible.
No.
Okay, then, let's go.
This is not religious stuff.
Raise your hand. If you have to make a deal of God, do something to swear.
I got to give you a God, do something to swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of East Cleveland, Ohio. I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially...
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially...
...the charge of duties of the office.
...the charge of duties of the office.
Of council clerk.
Of council clerk.
For East Cleveland, Ohio.
For East Cleveland, Ohio.
For which I have been informed.
For which I have been informed.
So, yeah. So, help me, God. Very nice. Alright. Back to agenda remarks, I'm probably, agenda items only.
Number one, you did vote to, you should have first of all, moved to, altered the agenda to, that's what you should have voted for, and then, and, uh, then vote to swear this person in. And I would like to ask a question. Are you a notary, or are you certified as a part of the clerk, uh, Mister President?
You asking, is the clerk?
No.
You asking me what?
To administer an oath, or you authorized to administer an oath.
From, from the legal law director?
He may be a president of council, but you have to be a notor- uh, either a notary, or a part of the, uh, the court. He is not certified to, to authorize, I mean, to administer an oath. That's illegal, and you're the Law Director, you know better than that. Now, you know that. It doesn't matter, he's president of council, but he's not illegal, he's not certified of the court, uh, by, uh, Law Director. You're a lawyer, you know that. I know that, I'm part of the court. Now, it has to be done over, because it's not legal.
No, the mayor swore in, he's not a notary, or is he on...
Well, if, if somebody had tested it, uh, tested it, and what have you, it would be illegal, you're still illegal.
He's married a lot of people.
Well, he, he's...
And he's married a lot of people.
Um, you know better than that, you know that, you know that's not right. You sitting up here going along with that, and then you gonna sanction that, as a Law Direct- I mean, as a Law Director?
His three minutes is up.
You should, you're not in there... I'm here trying to keep people from doing the right thing, essentially, say you wanna do the right thing, you do the right thing. That's what I'm saying. Is this a regular council meeting, or is this a general review? Number one, let me just come on down and speak to you. Uh, number one, was, was this position posted? Was it in the...
And then the fish talk.
Was, was it posted, or was it advertised in the paper, and if it was, what paper was it advertised in? Because it, it must be posted, that's the law. You sit over there shaking your head, and maybe, maybe it teaches you the law, because that, the position has to be posted.
Your time is up, thank you.
I know my time is up. Look, and do it right, I don't mind.
Good evening, Council, Mister President, and, uh, congratulations to this new clerk. Uh, my name is Gladys Park, I live at one three three one nine third Aden, and I don't know whether we're supposed to do that anymore, I noticed that most people are not giving their addresses anymore, so, I don't know what the rule is saying. My question is on the resolution. Uh, I hope that, um, you will explain the plan for disposal, and is there an inventory on record of how many, and what department are you disposing of the equipment? And, uh, who is the IT director? Three questions. And I hope you can answer that during the time that you present the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further, important announcement from the mayor?
Reportant announcement from the mayor? Yes. Well, today, I attended a Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, um, meeting, and we're going to follow up with another meeting on Tuesday. And that concerns the case, the on our Supreme Court, of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District versus Bass Township. There were four jurisdictions, political subdivisions, that sued the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, however, they lost. And so, the sewer bill, we learned today, will be going up as of July two thousand sixteen, for all householders. And so, we're gonna have a meeting Tuesday with the EPA and the Northeastern Ohio Regional Sewer District, and the Sewer District will be returning to council, uh, in order to explain some of their plans to do with the community cost share monies that will be returned to the communities for investment in stormwater management planning for the, um, for the city. So, every city under the jurisdiction of the Northeastern Ohio Regional Sewer District, uh, will get twenty-five percent, and it started off at seven percent, but Judge Tom, Thomas, uh, Bacorny, who decided over that at the trial level, insisted that the, uh, the amount to be returned to the communities not be seven and a half percent, but be twenty-five percent. So, uh, once that proposal is, uh, presented, we plan on returning it to the citizens, so if there is any input from the citizens, um, they can be heard.
Designated, uh, Law Director, and has it been decided how this money was going to be distributed back to the householders that are under the Sewer District?
Uh, that's what we asked of Director Shox, and, uh, we will be, uh, asking that on Tuesday as well. We're taking the chief of staff, as well as the, uh, building official, Mister Bunmaylis, with us, in order to try to find out, you know, what can be done with the twenty-five, uh, percent that comes back to us. We already have forty-six thousand dollars in our account, and, uh, that might be enough to pay the engineer, but, uh, we'll get some more money.
And one more thing, um, does this alleviate all the, I mean, the investments that has been made with the Sewer District? What, and there's a lot of pipe and stuff been laid, are they going to use other monies and revenues to finish their projects?
Um, there's federal grant monies, and there are other potential resources, and we would hope so. Every jurisdiction from Strongville to Akron, we're there, and Cleveland, we're there, uh, today, already greater Cleveland Bar Association. So, all the communities have an intense interest in this, it's just that the townships, the cities, um, the political subdivisions, the villages, we all lost. And the Sewer District won. And so, now, um, even if we have ideas, it has to be approved by the Sewer District, before any monies can be extended, kind of like on the ropes here with the Sewer District.
So, does this, no more questions, you request a chair? So, how does, that, that's a separate and apart fund withholding, not included in the revenue that runs this thing?
Right, yeah, right, return to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Very good question.
Requesting council committees?
Um, the Personnel and Appointment Committee will be a meeting on the, tentatively now, on the twenty-sixth, at, uh, let's see, fourth Tuesday, at least, so, that fourth Tuesday, uh, would be, um, the twenty-sixth, and it would be at six thirty P.M., tentatively, right now, because I have a, well, done it. As of now, because it's on the twenty-sixth.
Uh, legislation?
Oh, I'm sorry, now, let me tell him, I'm sorry, I didn't do it. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Joey Graham, sits on the Personnel and Appointments Committee, and so does, um, Councilwoman Nathaniel Martin, for the audience, for the residents.
Uh, legislation is on, for the agenda for next week, Resolution zero-one dash sixteen, three days.
Okay, this is Resolution number zero-one dash one-six. A resolution authorizing this disposal of non-functional obsolete computer equipment that is of no further use to the city, and declaring a public health, welfare, and safety emergency in order to provide the safe access upon city workplaces, requested by the IT Department, and sponsored by Council President Thomas J. Wheeler.
Yes, Father.
Well, you have to accept the, you're gonna say, um, you're sponsoring it.
Oh, I guess I'm gonna say, did you mean to say?
I'm gonna say it, we're gonna be sponsoring.
Okay, yeah, I'm sponsoring.
Okay, but I, what I wanna know is... What I want, what I wanna know is, um, this is an emergency for the safety of the workplace. Um, could someone explain to me what has hap- what has taken place, uh, for it to become a health hazard or a safety problem? Did anybody fell down and broke their leg, or...
No, no, and there was a, uh, I, I kinda, it's cluttered, but it's not, nobody's been injured. I have, I have two more questions, I'm sure they'll do it, but it's, it's on the, it's on here, but, I, I got a survival, do you, I don't know if anybody else got a copy of the survival?
It should have been attached, it should have been to all of it.
Okay, so, I, I'll give it, I'll make sure everybody get a copy of it, so this is, I have, uh, being, this day.
Okay, you, you know that, uh, if you all will do what's supposed to be correct, everything that is pertinent to this resolution is supposed to be attached. And therefore, all we have to do is look now, and see what's going on. So, I'm just saying, since we're starting off on the right foot.
You're gonna forget it.
And that's no pun intended.
It's like, it was, we know the attachment, but, sorry, I got it, I don't get it, so...
I had to ask for the email. I had to ask for the email, because at the beginning, it, um, it, it was an email. In fact, email, you email it this morning, yes, I did, and I asked her to email, so that's how you all got it, because originally, it was put in the book and in the box. So, from now on, uh, be, is you gonna email it, email it, and have it attached, because I didn't even get nothing, I told her, I didn't even know what the agenda was about, until, uh, I told her to email it to, to, oh, okay? Alright, no pun intended.
Question? Yeah, I got a question, the, I've seen so many equipment, I haven't seen this. Six months, I think, that's, 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 a little over six months, I'm not sure it's an emergency to, uh, pass it as a legislative legislation, probably more than two reads, but, it, it doesn't really have a market on both that...
And, 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 and based on the, uh, the amount of what's there in the clutter, I can see it being moved. And I, it's just like, they were talking about the cars before, so many cars there, and it's so much equipment, and I've been in the equipment room, and I agree. But I don't agree, um, that it should be on an emergency, we can do this one, uh, two reads ago.
Alright. Alright, nothing else, remarks, requests and proposals?
Before, before we say that, there, there, there are two pieces of, of legislation that...
Well, she went to get the list, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she went to get the list. We wanted to consider the presentation made a couple of weeks ago regarding legacy communication, and, um, passing some legislation to allow them to videotape council meetings.
Your agenda.
I, 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 I think, members of Tuesday, we, we can have them for me, because there's only gonna be one read, it's not gonna be an emergency.
I'm just saying here, you, you, that's what we gotta do with this, you said.
Whatever. Wait a minute, you said we passed it?
No, you passed it, you're down to, uh, your, of your public.
No, no, we're not, how do we get there?
Tamara was about to get up and speak, I said, hold on one second.
No, but, I still got the gavel. I ain't giving the gavel back, so, we still, we still right there.
Technically, we're right there.
Technically, because of you, and I don't care about the gavel, you have what you have done.
But I'm running a meeting, so, I haven't given them the gavel back, so it's, it's still my call.
He didn't finish it.
Wait, 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 what is it you wanna do?
I would like to open a discussion to have on the agenda for next Tuesday, legislation that will allow legacy communications to videotape council meetings, and to have a set, set parameter of the times. Cause right now, it's my understanding, Channel Nine is not even up to run. Alright, so remember this presentation, thought we should go?
First of all, I remember the presentation, everybody has not been privy to the entire, uh, presentation. So, I think, I don't know if everybody has seen this presentation, or what I went through, I'm not saying it's not good to do. I'm just saying, if you want to deal with it, and deal with the, the presentation like it's supposed to be brought before the council.
Well, the four, four out of the five have seen the presentation, so we can arrange a presentation... Well, the four, four out of the five have seen the presentation, so we can arrange a presentation for.
I'm saying have a meeting with legacy and go to that with the entire council, so that, who's committed to this?
That would have.
It's your committee, it's a contract.
Property and contracts, general services.
So, if you have, if you're dealing with legacy, have, have them in your meeting, do it and do it right and bring it up. But there won't be no questions as to what you and what is not. That's all I'm saying.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but we, we've had the presentation, you guys.
But you haven't had it in the committee. Now, move it to committee.
Yeah, I have a sample of the legislation draft.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move it, we'll move it to the committee and then, that's fine.
So, you know, don't, don't make things so cumbersome. Just, if you're gonna go by the rules and follow the rules and you saying you're gonna start following the rules, then deal. You're not a slow learner, you're just.
Learn, learn a lot.
Leaping into the wrong area.
Is there any other thing for legislations for passing the gavel back? Or we wanted to look at the.
That's, that's, that's where you do it.
Okay. I want to pass the gavel back.
You can have it one time, go ahead.
I've been waiting on that. What's up?
Well, we've caused a, we've had two, two, two readings, is that, is that doing emergency?
For the, I agree.
Got a question on this.
On what?
The, this craft.